We will begin the meeting so you can start recording. Okay. So, um, alright, I'm gonna change the order since our new trustee is gonna be a little bit late tonight. She had a prior commitment that she couldn't get out, but she should be here a little bit later around seven. So if we'll probably start with the after-public comment, move up the executive session, if that's okay? Just talk about the David's contract and the performance review. And then we'll start marching through the... So I'm gonna kick everybody out here. We'll start marching through the order after that. So, um, so in this public comment, I see anyone from the public? No? Okay. Then I'm gonna close the public comments. Um, I'm gonna consider approval of the meeting minutes for April fifteenth. Can I get a motion to accept it? And second? Second? I second this. Oh yeah, I'll second it. So all in favor of approving the minutes from April fifteenth? Alright.
You know what, I'll start saying?
One, two, three, four? Ah, we got it. Okay. So it's minutes are approved. You can vote on that.
But it seems improper.
It does.
Yeah, I get it.
I get you.
Um, okay, so we're gonna skip the welcome. I'm just thinking about this. People do trustee matters? You wanna have trustee matters? I'm sorry, I'm just getting a little bit limited. I also wanna be kind of send out our guests here tonight that are gonna be presenting. So you might be a little bit later than what you thought. So, um, no trustee matters. Kim, do you have any legal counsel updates? Uh, you're on mute.
Nope, no updates.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so, um... So, uh, we're gonna move to, uh, upon a two-thirds vote of the trustees present in the board, may enter to an executive session as permitted by Colorado revised statutes, section twenty-four, six, four oh two, four E one, to discuss matters subject to the negotiations and development of strategy concerning the executive director's service contract. So I still also move that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'll stop the recording.
Okay.
You can record from your end.
I'll record from here.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I left that definition term. We're going back on the record, okay? Um, so we're back in session, ended our executive session. So the next order of business...
Are we recording?
Yes.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the Boulder Library District Director Contract as presented here.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? David already approved the wording in there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, no one opposed? And so the motion carries. Kim, do we put this in the public record then? His contract, once it's approved?
Yep. You'll put it in the district records and then it is subject to disclosure under core if anybody asks for it.
Okay, yeah. Um, it's a motion for me to sign it. So I'm sorry, I should've needed to do that again. I think it's okay. Um, on behalf of the... Still have no trustee here. Um, okay. Um, we're... Do you wanna wait till Nadine gets here to elect officers? Or...
Yeah.
Okay, then we will do that. The next item of business then will be presentation of the EDI strategy and culture survey results.
This is Aida Flores, our EDI coordinator. She presented the presentation. We have some, I think you got to see it, and Sam got to see part of this presentation a month ago at the staff chat, but I thought it would be good to bring it forward.
Sure. Well, nice to meet you all. And we'll be happy to present. Let me just see if that's working now.
Anton, can you see the screen? Or do you might have to follow along?
No, I can see it.
Okay, good.
Okay, perfect. Well, um, I'm going to share two things. The first one is the results from the survey that we have this year. And we're also going to present like a glance of how our strategy looks for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. And it was built based on the survey results. Uh, just to give you some context, we had a similar survey in twenty twenty-one. So we took, we had back then eighty responses. This year we have a hundred and twenty-something, which it was the response rate, I think. And we use some of the questions from that survey this same year just to be able to compare improvements in those, in those questions. So you will be able to see those and new questions that we included this year. Well, our objective is mainly to get a sentiment on how our people, how staff is feeling in terms of equality, diversity, and inclusion experience within the library. Uh, to do this, we asked to rate on a point scale of agreeing or disagreeing. The survey was sent to everyone across the organization, and we received a hundred and twenty-three responses. So this is a high response that shows strong participation, and it helps us to ensure that these results are reliable and valid. What are the key insights? These are practically all the results. We wanted to summarize everything so it'll be easier for all of you to read. In the left, it is summarized, a summarized version of the results because the long version has a detail for each of the questions that we had with some recommendations as well, just in case one day you want to go through them. We have that option as well. You will see some items in light green that says twenty twenty-one as we are comparing those questions. I think you cannot see very well the light green here, but you can, you will be able to see survey twenty twenty-one. So that like, for example, recognition of personal identity twenty twenty-five, we got ninety-five percent this year, and in twenty twenty-one, we have eighty-nine. So that's the way you can identify them. So when we look at the results, we can see improvements in most of the questions. I'm happy to see that there is a lot of pride, there is a lot of trust, there is a lot of sense of connection, which I think that's very important to continue building this strategy because we are not from base to zero, you know? We have a very high rate interest in running these programs, which is really good. The sentiments is good. People feel comfortable working here. We see improvements in recognition for personal identities. We have improvements for the supervisor support, how receptive they are in terms of about topics about EDI. We also saw improvements for being valued for our identity and own contributions. Also about building an inclusive workplace culture, equal treatment, fair and bias-free, and open communication. Even though we have good results, of course, there are other things that we need to still working on. And you're gonna be able to see it as well in our, in our strategy. If we move to the yellow score is where we got a score of seventy to eighty-four. So we still have good results in here. The only one that I want to highlight is the first one, that is work-life balance. So that's the only one that had a red flag in terms of when we did the breakdown by demographics. More women. Women are more represented among those who disagree. So we're just trying to understand why this is happening just to, in order also to be able to run some programs to improve this number. For the rest, we didn't see any relevant or significant data that let us know like something is going wrong based on a demographic breakdown. So that's also a good news. If we compare to twenty twenty-one, we also saw improvements in terms of sharing ideas. So that shows like people trust even more. We also have improvements in leadership and EDI conversations and accessible training and development. And the two areas in red are the ones where below seventy, which are attracting and retaining diverse talent. And we have addressing discrimination or bias complaints. So for those two, most of the ones in the last one is because people do not know if there is a specific place or channel or tool where they can just submit complaints or misconduct reports, et cetera. So, and you will see also in our strategy how we're going to address this situation.
Was that a question that you asked in twenty twenty-one? Or was that in twenty twenty-one?
Uh, no, those we didn't.
Okay.
Those are new. Any questions here? We're gonna move on, and if you have questions later, we can... In these questions, we ask the staff if they have experienced or witnessed discriminatory events. In twenty twenty-five, we see mental and/or hidden disabilities like neurodiverse people, for example, or I don't know, OCD. It can include many other disabilities. We didn't have the chance to open this question just to understand which ones specifically, but it's important to acknowledge this. Also racial equity, age, housing, political polarization. And those are for twenty twenty-five. Those that we had in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-five are racial equity, age, housing, and political polarization. In twenty twenty-one, that we didn't see in the responses for twenty twenty-five are language ability and weight. Now, if we see it from the side of from patrons, have you experienced or witnessed discriminatory events? And it's important to note that most people who responded this question was mostly from patrons to patrons. So it's not like from patrons to staff. And the key insights are in twenty twenty-five, we have physical disability, racial equity, gender expression specifically for non-sisgender and non-headed, I'm sorry, I cannot pronounce that, heterosexual. Housing, language ability, national origin. And for twenty twenty-one, we had political polarization.
Did, sorry, did this whole survey go to both patrons and staff? Or like, most of the surveys just staff that we surveyed, right?
Exactly, it was only for the staff, but the staff...
So this is staff witnessing patron, okay, thank you.
Exactly. So even though this strategy is gonna be for the staff, it always is a reflection, you know? You work with the staff, and of course, the staff is gonna be able to work on this with the rest. So that's why it's important to acknowledge this question and to be aware of what's going on. It gives us that big picture. I also want, wanted you to know how do staff typically address when they experience or witness any type of discrimination among staff? Because it's important to know who they trust, you know? Or what information they have, how our communication work came for them to know how to address the situations. So most people go to HR or to their supervisors, and a good number of people also mentioned that they just resolved it directly. Which in my opinion, it's good if it's not serious. But at the same time, it's not good if you're not prepared to do it. So that's why we're gonna be happy with you. That is in the strategy, also a lot of training going on in order to, to be able and be aware of what to do, what you have to face a conflict with somebody. And what are the ideas? Most ideas from staff, we had a phone-up question. They can just, what would you like to see in the strategy? Because we wanted to build a strategy made for them, you know? Not HR working something randomly. You know, we wanna look this from their ideas. So they want trainings. So we're gonna start with EDI foundations. We're gonna, they want more affinity groups. Right now, we have a Latino group, and they're looking forward to explore more. Inclusive leadership, this is more communication with leaders, leaders involved in EDI topics. We're gonna have inclusive hiring programs, multiculturality, they want to explore more. They want to learn Spanish, that's why the language. They are curious to understand different faiths, you know? Faith and to understand if we have an event, what type of food, to consider if we are, you know? So they're very curious about that. So we're also gonna be working on, on something there. Any questions there? Because I'm gonna move to this strategy. I don't know if I was too fast.
No. Okay. Kind of ties with actually the other survey we're gonna have a little bit. So...
So if we move to, these are gonna be the goals. So first, we want the executive commitment of disability. Of course, we have them aware of this, which is huge. People know about it, and we're gonna make sure to engage them in everything we have in our work plan. We're also gonna be working empowering inclusive managers, equip, and give them all the tools that are necessary for them to understand their teams, to create better connections with them. We're gonna foster empathy and psychological safety. Even though it's so hard and almost impossible to create a safe place in this world and every space, this is important to acknowledge that too. What we want is what can we do to make you feel good and to make you do your work feeling good? Okay, so that's our goal in this strategy. We're gonna make sure that they're being seen, heard, understood, valued. We're gonna be working also in communication and transparency to create more engagement. We're also gonna be providing learning and engagement programs, and we're working on accessibility. Accessibility, I have many meanings. And here, we're focusing on digital, physical accessibility. We also have some programs that I'm gonna show in the next slide. Oh, well, this is how like the team players, and it's just important to show as well because we have different groups that are supporting this strategy. So we have the HR director, this lady. We have that EDI coordinator, that's me. The co-chairs, we have two co-chairs helping us also just to understand different perspectives and see how we're gonna meet our goals. And then we have an EDI team. We meet with them every month just to review our initiatives, best practices, and to execute all what we have in our work plan. We have an affinity group that is from the Latinos. And soon, maybe we're gonna have the LGBTQ plus group. And then we have an ERG that is the accessibility team. So they're helping us alongside them. We're just building on what is related to social stories, a three sixty photo tour of the library, noting where our accessibility features are. So we're currently working on something like that. Working on accommodation process as well. So there's a lot of things that we are trying to, to work in that area. And of course, all the staff. So we couldn't do it, I think.
Aren't we working on a accessibility, but like the website? We start that or look at that?
Well, there's a set of Colorado state rules that we're working on.
Okay.
Make sure we comply with, but we have some time.
Okay, you have some time on that.
We're basically founders, folks, in here.
To do the accessibility on the digital resources. Okay, sorry.
Well, these are the pillars that are gonna help us meet our goals. I'm not gonna stop here a lot because I prefer you to see how we're doing in each of them. So I'm gonna move to the next slide. And in the next, this is our plan. If we go to the first pillar, we have learning and awareness. Those what you see with the little square on the left are those who are planned. Then we have the arrow, that is those who we're working on. And the check one is when those we already started. So we have the EDI foundations. We just started having all our trainings this month. So we have inclusive hiring. And we're having conversations. We have like the training part that is mostly like talking about difference between equity and equality, unconscious bias, microaggressions, racial equity, microformations. But we also have conversations. Not only the theory, but let's talk about this. So we have every month also conversations. Now they're about LGBTQ plus. Like we had the mental health one this month. And in June, we're gonna have the ones for pride month. So we already have a plan for this year and the one for the next year, but things can change though, depending on the feedback from our staff. Then for human resources, inclusive hiring is one of the ones we saw in red in our results. So this is really, really important for us. We are reviewing and revising all our job descriptions to make sure they're inclusive language. We had our inclusive hiring training. Today, actually, we sent a recording with a lot of resources that our hiring managers can use. We are being part of the onboarding now. It's part of the onboarding agenda. We are reviewing the candidate masking in velocity. So that will make our recruiting process more, it's like an anonymous way, and making more inclusive, which is pretty cool. And we'll create other resources that could help us to minimize biases. The retention program? I'm sorry, so far, we already did the first one, inclusive hiring, and we are ongoing with the development in our onboarding process. For retention, we have been running since like, I don't know how long ago because I wasn't here, but I think it is like two, three years that they implemented the program for new hires. So it's practically someone who helps you get familiar with the library and your role and whatever you need when you just joined the library. Train managers on psychological safety, microformations, and use performance review data to identify and address disparities. So I'm being part of all the performance reviews processes and whatever equity payment thing that we have to review. Even though that's a HR director responsibility, I'm always there just to have the equity lens to see and make sure that everything is equal. For communications, we have created an EDI short line where we upload everything, like recordings, articles, guides, like inclusive language guide. We have our diversity calendar program, but we are about to share that. It's pretty cool because you are able to have in your Outlook banner on the top all type of observances about EDI. And you have the option to enable it or not. And the good thing is that you click on the date and it gives you all description of the observance and be prepared for whatever you have. If you're going to receive a group of children that are from India, you know? What are we gonna do? You know, or they're from Mexico, what are you gonna do? So it gives you some tips on how to interact with different type of groups. And we're going to design and launch our confidential channel report. That's another red flag that we saw in our survey. So we're gonna create our confidential channel. Engagement, we have our affinity groups, inclusive language pronoun campaign. We have like a little sticker so we can identify ourselves if we want to get to know our pronances. And this is helping us to minimize situations when patrons come here and they're like normally, we would like to be addressed as with our pronances. That's helping us a lot. And well, we're celebrating heritage months and cultural moments. We're having office hours. So I visit every branch every now and then just to make sure people want to talk about something private or whatever. So to be reachable. And accessibility, like I said, we have, we just had our accessible IT products. We are translating our core HR documents to Spanish. We are working on accommodation with process. We are auditing our major spaces to make sure they are accessible and to make our services more accessible for people with disabilities. We're working on social stories for navigation and the three sixty video for a tour that I already mentioned before. And this is pretty much how it works. I know, maybe I gave a lot of information, maybe, but I mean, you wanna stop and ask me something specific?
Lot of, lot of stuff.
We're a little busy, if you like it.
Yeah. So is the plan to do this every year, every two years? Look at this? Yeah, or to do the survey or whatever?
Oh, quick, oh, this survey, we're gonna have it every two years.
Every two years?
Yeah. To give time to show that, to see some changes, you know? We thought like maybe two years will be fair. And we're gonna have just little like polls, I call them poll surveys, you know? Then just to see that our programs are actually working, that people are liking the programs, maybe the trainings are not what they're looking for. So we're gonna be having those. But yes, the formal survey will be until two years.
Is there any interface with the city and their program relating to these efforts?
Yes, to some extent. We're hosting, actually hosting the GARE conference. Sam, are you going?
Yes.
We have, we have a couple of free seats, but we do stay in touch with the city's executive office.
Yeah, I thought particularly as it relates to the affinity thing you just left, there might be some good synergy there.
Oh, that we have not done it, but Anna Sylvia and Amy Kane have been great these years.
Yeah, we're in constant communication with them, and they help me a lot.
Yeah, that could be a place where they have fourteen hundred employees and we have, you know, a hundred and thirty-five or whatever. So just to get some mass around your different groups might be helpful to combine efforts there, if it's possible. Although I think, I thought we were a little bit ahead of the city before on affinity.
Yeah, yeah, so we, we started them before the city. We started the EDI team before the city rolled out their, their plan for equity and inclusion. I think the EDI team at the library has been in place for now six or seven years.
Yeah.
And I mean, they've done great work. It is a group without, you know, they had, they had, they had requested the EDI coordinator, it was one of their main requests for the district. We now have that, I think, ID, been here for seven months. Eight months, something like that. Yeah, so ID is fairly recent job. But I think it's giving us guidance, you know? It's a two-year volunteer cabinet for the EDI team. And then people rotate into the leadership positions if they choose. And that lasts for a year. And so there's been quite a lot of turnover. We cycled through obviously quite a lot of people in seven years. And I, this is, this last year was the first time we haven't had a member of the leadership team on the EDI team, which is something that I think now we recognize with having ID's presence there. And I believe HR is also present sometimes too. Just in terms of touch point.
How, this is just my ignorance of this. How much does like the EDI team get into like helping with like staff, you know, library programs for the public? Is it at all or none? Is it all internally focused or is it...
You see things on the voting boards as you walk in. So there's the word of the month and the word of the day. There's a lot of things there where they, they're, they're, they have had control. And they do, they've done a lot of work internally for us in educating on different terminology and behaviors and a lot really around accessibility and like... But it's been a cost of changing kind of thing depending on what EDI team does. But not interact like doing a program in the theater where people would come in and sit down. That has not been a role of EDI team. Their role is primarily one in terms of, you know, advising in terms of recruitment, retention. I mean, they basically wrote our policy. I mean, they basically wrote our policies for recruitment and retention six years ago. They did a great job. Those were semi-approved by the city, but we've been functioning fully off of them since we moved to district. To any extent that we can, but it was a heavy lift that first two or three years of the EDI team. But that was the work that they were doing and also reviewing policies. I feel like our policies are pretty much under review and there isn't regular process now with the board to review policies. I think we have a lot of challenges.
Okay. You have more or more of your presentation or?
No, that's it, yeah.
And, and how do you pronounce your name? Aida?
Aida.
Aida, okay.
Thank you.
And yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tom, do you have anything, sorry?
Yeah, I'm just saying thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming and yeah, I'm looking forward to, you know, well, I may not be on the board when the next one comes out, but you know, like, you know, it's, it's good to see and hopefully we continue to make progress. Despite the political environment, I'm still committed to this. Um, okay, um, next is, let's see, we're going to director updates.
So I'll start with the annual report. You have a new package, I'm not gonna read through the whole thing. This is a statutory requirement. We have to, we have to turn over the annual report every year to the governing boards, the city council and the county commissioners by July. And so I'm looking for some odd approval or something.
July 31st.
July 31st, July 31st is when we have to turn it in. I hope to do that in July, since we don't meet in June. We could revisit this again in July to make changes. But the document is pretty straightforward. We tried to keep it down to mostly a lot of statutory requirements. Bit list, a brief kind of bullet list of the information includes the map, includes the financials. And then at the end includes. Is she here?
Yeah.
She's which door?
I think she's on the canyon side.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sure, if you don't mind, you wanna go? See if she's on that side and just let her in. You know, the doors will come when you walk towards them. And Aida, if she's on the, she might be on the right side, I don't know if she is, yeah.
Let me check.
She said parked on canyon side.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, right down there, yeah.
So the other part in the middle of the.
Just to pause.
Oh, you just want to, okay, okay.
Sorry. Who's the little one, who's?
Ah, this is Andres, who some of you just met.
Right.
Facilities. Uh, this is San Marcel. It's, uh, this thing in the library, that's why he showed me the picture today. It's Marcel's book this year in twenty twenty-four, and so he has.
Yes, wonderful.
And it's also a great inside joke, if you, if you get it, that he's reading. And the book has been, as the annual report is technically meant to do. It's like soup.
Well, I think you should add a photo credit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I don't know if I'll mention who he is, but.
No, but you could just, yeah.
Okay, come on in, maybe you, your seat is right here.
Oh, yeah.
Um, so this is your name tag that Sylvia have you made and you can wear that to social functions and we have a sign there for you. Although don't touch it too much because it might fall over. And so, welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you.
And we're, we're just on the director update, so you have your package here.
Okay.
Um, just on to the director updates. We'll start over in a second after we swear in our new trustee is out.
Yeah, you, you wanna just, you just adjust the.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, you have to deliver the oath.
Okay.
So, um.
Do you wanna do introductions first?
Let's swear her and then. Um, I'm just gonna have her.
I'm sorry, you have to change your mind.
That's right.
I, I, I did the repeat after me. Do we wanna continue this repeat after me thing? Oh, well, we're gonna do it, so here we go. So this is delivering your oath to the become a trustee.
Okay.
And this is a requirement of state law.
Okay.
It's not just a, an embarrassment thing. So you don't have to raise your hand or anything, but repeat after me. I, Nadine.
I, Nadine, screwziero.
Screwziero. Do, and you can select one, swear, affirm, or swear by the ever-living God.
Let's do affirm.
Okay. That I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Colorado.
That I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Colorado.
And the laws of the state of Colorado.
And the laws of the state of Colorado.
And I will perform, and I will fully perform the duties of the office of the trustee of the Boulder Public Library District.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of trustee of the Boulder Public Library District.
Upon which I'm about to enter into the best of my ability.
Upon which I'm about to enter into the best of my ability.
All right, well, welcome.
Thank you.
So.
Maybe there are more lawyers in the room than not lawyers. Just me, including online.
Oh, sorry, actually I signed the wrong spot. Can you reprint that out? Sorry.
I had a premonition.
Am I supposed to sign it down here because it, this is a notary? And I, or is it like I'm just certifying it? Anyway.
I just got my.
All right.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
Okay, okay, well, I'll sign it. Sorry.
Well, nice to meet you, Bob.
You do sign that.
Yes, whenever you sign that. Um, yeah, Sylvia, will you begin?
Hi, Nadine, I'm Sylvia, welcome.
Hi.
I'm Kara, I'm, I live in your neighborhood.
You already see our pool.
Andy Seeler, previously with Tom, the newest member of the board prior to you just replacing us in that capacity.
You're the rookie?
Yay.
Um, Doug Hamilton, so welcome, we met briefly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Benny did it real, nice to meet you.
Me too.
We drove around.
We drove around.
And Tom.
Hi, I'm Tom Cosgrove, glad to have you onboard.
Okay, and now we're gonna introduce the other people in the room.
I have a little representation here.
Uh, Cam, go ahead.
Kim Seder, Seder Vanderwall and Milky, we're attorneys for the district. And Courtney's down there, I'll let her introduce herself too.
Courtney Antara, also with the Seder Vanderwall and Milky, thanks for having us, welcome.
Been our attorneys for a long time.
As long as we.
Chris, can you introduce yourself?
Hi, Nadine, I'm Chris Byers, Executive Director of the Boulder Library Foundation, so sweet, you're welcome.
So you'll have to hopefully meet with him separately at some point. Um, Marie, Maran.
Uh, I'm Maria Tom, most likely the communications engagement and marketing of the library, nice to meet you.
And Aida?
Aida Flores from Equity, Diversity and Inclusion.
And Sylvia?
We probably four years.
She keeps the, the ship moving.
We need her.
Yes, so, um, okay, so, you know, we're just gonna continue on.
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm late, everyone, but it was my daughter's first dancer title ever. And so I watched it and then I got to exit. It's not a bad excuse to watch a rest. I supposed to answer, I was like, can my husband goodbye? And I was like, please, goodbye. I was like, don't leave me.
It's a, a busy time of the year with end of school, back titles, the cycle. So, um, let's continue with the, go, maybe start over with the directors update, if you don't mind.
How did your talk do?
She did great. She twirled for a whole minute and a half and it was glorious, the rainbows and it was cute.
Sounds awesome. All right, so director's part, we're gonna, the annual report is a statutory requirement. So we have to file an annual report with the governing boards, the city council, the county commissioners, who are a couple of people who we just interviewed, I think, were the establishing bodies of the library district. And so we, we have to turn in our annual reports to them in July each year. This report looks different than what we've done in the past. We've kind of tried to streamline it. It's not as maybe flashy or anything, so we concentrated really on the, the things that are required in the document. It's just a list of officers. There's a message from Doug at the beginning. It includes a brief history of the mission and vision of the organization, a map of the district, which is a requirement. The financials of the districts are also a requirement. And then I wanna talk briefly about the key forms indicators. But then there are several highlights towards the end of the document, stressing the opening of the Nobel Library, the launch of the literacy and outreach program. Then volunteers, which are such a critical component of what the library does each year. You guys obviously are volunteers, but you're not the only reason you do it. Volunteers make up about ten percent of our entire workforce. I do wanna touch briefly on the KPIs. I don't have a better term for it, I don't know that I really love that term, key forms indicators. But it is, it is something that obviously we track thousands of points of data about a lot of different things. Not all of them are important. Some of them are, and I think they give you a fairly good insight into how the library is doing from year to year. So this is something that if you were to ask at any time, we ought to be able to provide you an answer as if you said, how's it going with such and such? And this does give a fairly accurate picture of how the library is doing overall. It doesn't tell you the backstory, it needs you to give individual one, but it does give you a picture of how the library is doing. So the district service area population increase obviously was a result of the district formation. We incorporated an additional, oh, twenty-six thousand people into the district. About seventeen thousand cardholders in total that now previously were outside of the city of Boulder, but are now inside the library district and helping us to fund the library through their property tax contributions. The number of library cards as a percent of the total population is a number that we have reported for years. It's probably the last year we're gonna report it in the KPIs. We, the Boulder, it isn't, I mean, Boulder is an outlier in this. There, there, there is one other library that does not amount to resort town in the state of Colorado that has more library cardholders than it has residents. And that's kind of just a strange anomaly that Boulder has been a workforce center and a visitor center. And so people have come in here and it's always been one of those really strange numbers. If you were to look at this, it looks like vague, right? So having a hundred and thirty-three percent or a hundred and two percent is a very high number. The number that we have begun reporting on this year, really for the first time, we did a check back in twenty eighteen. We also done a check on the percentage of households in the district that have a library cards. This is a number that is reported, you know, by some libraries around the state. I think it is a good sign of how the library is doing. Our saturation rate, we refer to this as a saturation rate of the district, and sixty-four percent is the highest one that I know of in the state, which is great, but we knew that already, right? We knew that the number was gonna be high because of the high concentration of library users in the Boulder community. I, I do wanna draw attention just to the fact that this number is replicable in the sense in which we can draw it for you at any time with relatively simple measures. It's not perfect. So it excludes, we had to exclude residents where there are multi-dwelling, not apartments where people typically list their apartment number, but in a, like in a manufactured home community where there's a single address and unless people list their location within it, it's not gonna couple them up. So the manufactured home communities, some university housing and some senior residential facilities are excluded from this overall thing, which brings our number down. So I think the real number is probably closer to seventy percent, sixty-eight, seventy percent. But at least this is a number that we can easily produce and track each year. It was some work to get it because of those places that all the math was included in this. New library cards issued, this is a really, it's a remarkable number, ten thousand. It's, again, if you were to look at statewide numbers, but not library too, you would not see a number this high in a community that's this small, a hundred and thirty thousand people, a hundred and twenty thousand people. And that is a reflection of the university, the presence of the university. But they are, you know, a third of the population or roughly a third of the population. And they do lend themselves to a high degree of turnover in terms of the new cardholders. So it's a number that we like to see stay relatively healthy, that number is up.
Is it, is it up though, like even from twenty twenty-three? So I think, is that probably North Boulder and our outreach team as well, you think?
The outreach team is doing great work and we are seeing, we did see quite a number of cards. I can't remember how many. It's something like eight or nine hundred new cardholders in as a result of the North Boulder library opening, which is a shocking number because we didn't, we did not anticipate that. We thought there might be a slight bump, but there were a lot of households that just simply didn't have library cards. And so a lot of the manufactured home communities right next to us, the manufactured home community, we saw a huge uptick in cards there. We have a map that shows where all the new cards were. I can bring this back in future time, you'll see it. Pretty interesting, I, I didn't expect seeing a huge increase in the North Boulder cardholders, but we did see. The next ones are all kind of use metrics, so that's kind of like just how are we doing? Total in-person visits, this is a good number, we're at six twenty-five. The, the note that's not here is that libraries across the state, across the range, saw a massive decline in attendance at libraries during the pandemic. So our total drop in numbers was about fifty percent at that time, more than fifty percent to talk about pandemic. We're back up now to about sixty-two, sixty-three percent of where we were prior to the pandemic. The numbers are continuing to grow. In twenty twenty-five, March was the busiest month we've had since the pandemic. So that's a good sign because March is not typically a busy month. I think we'll see turn numbers again in April and May. So the numbers are coming back and I think we'll see growth in this areas again as well next year. But the other part, which I think we've talked about multiple times, is that people's habits changed dramatically during the pandemic. And I don't know, we're betting pretty hard and heavy on the idea that a lot of people are gonna return. But I think we said we embarked upon that bet a year and a half ago, that there was a good chance, probably a fifty percent chance that we would not see quick returns to the numbers we had prior to pandemic. Prior to the pandemic, this library alone would have had six hundred and twenty-five thousand visitors in a year. So we want to, we honestly see those numbers going up. The branches are recovering at a rapid, more rapid rate than Maine. Maine's numbers are still about fifty-two percent. The branches are around eighty, eighty-five percent of what they were prior to pandemic. You'll see some indications of why that might be in the survey, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna say for certain, I can't really say for certain. Total program attendance, it's a number that we're investing a lot of, in programming. But I think it's a good number for us to track. We did see a fourteen percent increase. That's good, I think we wanna continue to see growth. That number is also reflective of the number of people who walked through the doors. It's down by about forty percent of what it was prior to pandemic. So we still, that number would have been prior to pandemic, about a hundred thousand people. It's like a hundred thousand people. And so there's plenty of room to grow, continue to grow over the next few years to get that number back up to a high level. Circulation is the one that has recovered most fully during the pandemic. And that's, since the pandemic, that speaks again towards, I think, what we've seen is a major digital use. So those people, you know, you can go online, find the book you want, download it to your device and never set foot in the library. You don't have to come in the library to get a library card. Now we have an automated way to get a library card that verifies address and you can get a card at home. So I mean, in fact, we may see just continued growth in that digital participation in the library. I think it's gonna be back, yes.
I'm curious, like, do we have any sense of like how many of those folks who are what you just described, getting the electronic materials and never coming in? How many of those people are getting the new cards? Do we have any idea?
I don't, that's a good question. It would be interesting to try to correlate.
Oh, you mean like the new light card?
Yeah, yeah, right, just to see if they're like wanting to take advantage of like.
Is that, is it anyone in Colorado can get the digital card?
No, it verifies it, so for.
That being the digital.
Anybody can come into the library and get a library card.
Yeah, okay.
In order to get a library card online, it has to verify your address within the district.
And what does total materials and circulation, does that mean like how many books we own?
No, no, no.
Or is that how many were checked out?
Yeah, that's all the books and ebooks that have been checked out. So that number is about ninety percent of what we were prior to the pandemic. I, well, maybe, I think we were on Friday, right before the pandemic in twenty nineteen, it was last year we had. And so we're getting, we're inching up there. It would not surprise me at least when we open up gun barrel, we surpass our twenty nineteen numbers in twenty twenty-five. That would be the first, any, any indicator of anything we've done. We surpassed the numbers prior to pandemic, but it'll probably be circulation. Circulation is robust, we've seen a decline. Physical circulation remains flat. I mean, this is something that the library commission was asking about when we met at the pandemic. Do you think this trend will turn around? Because there was a time during the pandemic where half the books that were circulating were digital. It was fifty-fifty and that was scary. Because as you know, the cost of buying digital books is significantly higher. The initial investment, I guess, the cost of actually owning them is not significantly different because we don't own them, we lease them, we lease ebooks. But that's what patrons want. And as you've probably all experienced, there are still waiting lists oftentimes for ebooks, for books that you want. As you've probably all experienced, there are still waiting lists oftentimes for e-books, for books that you want. There's a waiting list or you decide to go and get a media gratification somewhere else. And so it's one of those ones that we are right now pumping a lot of money into in hopes of catching up with where the market is, right? So when you're looking at market consumption about books and information, I mean, you can look at sales records nationally to see where that kind of bubbles out. And right now, you know, book consumption is about thirty-five percent digital. That's very different than 2000 where it was less than two percent. It's very different than what it was in 2019 where it was about twenty-two percent. So it's jumped, it jumped about thirteen percent during the pandemic. We're playing catch-up to a certain extent. And those books are all leased. We cannot capitalize e-books, whereas we can capitalize on physical collection. But you know, it's trying to keep up with the pandemic, finding that level point where the market is now set. And I, and we are about thirty-three percent of all of our circulation currently is digital.
Well, I think my comment is, I think we increased the circulation budget by about twenty percent in 23. And we saw, it looks like a, well, total circulation includes digital and, and, and physical, right? We saw a seven percent increase. So like in, I, I, I'm just trying to like, the investment versus the increase was, I was hoping that maybe we'd have a higher increase, I guess, in circulation. So read more books, I suppose, and check them out more, I guess. So, yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, it's with a three-week circulation time. We would have to put more money into it to see the return of the increase. Like if we, if we increased the volume, it could amount more of it. It's like if you have a three-week circulation time, what does that make for? You're only going to get twenty, twenty-four circs out of the year.
Yeah.
So, and, 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 you know, it's working, but it's got to buy exact.
I, I just wondered, like, you know, what the data is on that, like, as you invest, you know, there's probably a point where you kind of max out, I guess, your investment in books and then you're not consumed by huge, you know, spike in circulation.
Yeah. Where we're seeing the most growth is in e-audio. So e-audio is incredibly expensive and that's where the most growth is.
Okay.
Right now, we cannot keep talking.
Okay.
The amount of books that are demanded in audio.
I know my one daughter tried to get the new Hunger Games book or whatever. Serpents and Fire or whatever, the waiting list was five hundred and fifty people.
I'd go to three stores to get my copy.
I bought.
They were sold out that time.
I bought the thirty-six dollar version at the Boulder bookstore, so.
What a nice day.
I know. Anything to encourage it, but anyway, sorry. All right, that's just a question.
And then the last one is unique computer sessions. And so you've, I mean, I, this is one that we've known about for years. It's another decline this year, which is, it doesn't mean that fewer people are here in the library using computers. What it means is that they're bringing their own devices. So they're using the wireless and more and more we see that. It is, you know, it's not, we're not there yet, but I, I had a remark in the notes that over the last fifteen years, we've seen eighty-four percent decline. And, and at the same time, we've seen a higher and higher saturation of high-speed internet access in homes. I think in the city of Boulder now, it's ninety-six percent of households have high-speed internet access in homes. You know, I'm, I'm not.
Still ninety, ninety people a day across five libraries? That's not a crazy amount.
No, it's, you know, it's a, it is. In our next strategy, I think we'll probably be talking about, you know, bringing this service to a close. I mean, for, for a good two decades, it was, I think, one of the major accomplishments of public libraries in the twentieth century was providing public computing. Nobody was, Steve Jobs was not thinking about how can I make this available to everybody. Public libraries were. But I think that day is, that day is long past now. It's a good fifteen years in decline. And it's not long before we probably don't have a public computing district. We'll have to have a couple for, you know, usage of the public when they come in, but I don't think it's a big difference. Any other questions on the annual report? There's a thing at the end on meeting room occupancy. So I'm trying to, what I'm trying, what we're trying to do with the key performance indicators is to give you a simple table of eight or nine numbers that you can track every month or every year, however much you want to do it. You can say like, oh, that's how things are going. And that, that will give you a fairly decent insight into how the library is doing. It's, it's, it's interesting to me after thirty years of libraries, like the new library card issued is probably one of the most indicative numbers about where your library is going. If you start to see a drop in that number, it should be, it's kind of like a canary in the coal mine. You should be asking questions if you see that. Circ and, you know, program attendance, those things are, those, these are kind of episodic. It depends on, really circ is driven totally by the number of new books you buy, right? So if we are buying a lot of new books, if we were spending four times the amount on new books, we would see a higher number than what we're seeing now. But we're not in a position to spend four times that amount. But it really is the amount of money that goes into new books, not books as a whole. It's the new books that are coming out. That is the critical factor that drives that circulation.
Yeah, I think that.
So we know how to pull those plugs. I'm not sure that that's as indicative necessarily of how we're doing, but it tells you what we're doing. New cardholders is a, is a number that I think you should be monitoring and looking at from time to time. And certainly the in-person visits and the tracking of electronic materials that we've been talking about the last two years, it is a, it is a an important source of how we think about how we use our resources as we're looking at buildings, as we're expanding facilities, those facilities are more and more, less and less warehouses for books and more and more community spaces for programming or for people to come together do their own thing, hanging out on their own devices.
Can you grow a question here? Sorry, maybe it comes later. But in your KPIs, do you show anything in terms of like the investment that you need? So like you mentioned that attendance was a, it's, it's popped up quite a bit or you said there were a lot of new programs, but how much? Anywhere to compare, like how much did you spend in programs to get a fourteen percent increase versus like how much you spent in digital materials to get that percent increase?
We do report that yearly. You would have it in the budget, but I'm not sure with the finances. These finances don't really call it out entirely because what you see, you don't see this. And we will report it. I track the staffing and expenditure, but not personnel expenses together. And so the, the amount of money that we put into programming last year did go up significantly, more than fourteen percent. And so we are still lagging, right?
Yeah.
You know, some of the programs only really launched mid-year. Most of the programs only launched mid-year. The theater only launched mid-year. But I think it will be a support on this pilot program.
Yeah.
We still have another year, so to come to see how it's going to play out, but right now it's volatile. But I think we have to look at it as well.
Yeah, that's true. The staff didn't even really start probably until May, April, May timeframe, most of the staff.
Most of the new staff got on RFA. It could only be up until the year of July. But again, it's the numbers. Well, I won't speculate. I, I, we, I think we want to see both of those numbers, in-person visits and program attendance.
We can see.
Because they're tied together.
Yeah.
And, and it's, if you look across the state nationally, like in libraries that invest in programming, it's typically about ten percent of what your door count is. And so I don't know that it's a hard fast rule, but it's held pretty true for all the data I've looked at. So we need to try, you know, to what extent, is it chicken and egg? Does program attendance drive the door count?
Yeah.
Does the door count drive program attendance? I don't know the answer exactly, but those two are inextricably linked and we have to see increases. Because we bet heavily in the, in the formation of the district. We added staff in almost every public service area and we added staff in program. And so you would expect to see, that was betting big on the 2019 numbers.
Yeah, that's where my head was going. Like you would expect to see that correlation. If you continue to invest in digital materials, you may never see that footprint come in the door. And there may be endless sink, sink, money in it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's an important decision we must make. Okay. The annual meeting room occupancy, I wanted, I'd put it in here. I don't know that we're going to include it in the final record. It is a number that I think is worth tracking, how are meeting rooms being used, how is study rooms being used? And, you know, weekend use is, weekend meeting use is the highest rate. Daytime use is pretty low, but we have tracked, these numbers are, these numbers are as good or better than what we had prior to pandemic. It probably just means we might need more meeting room space and more study rooms. We are adding study rooms in this library on the second floor, I think, before the end of the year.
Do we consider study rooms to be different from meeting rooms?
Yeah, they only have, I mean, you could probably tell how many people. I see a four people in the study rooms, but it's typically for one or two people.
So these stands don't reflect study rooms?
They, they do reflect the meeting rooms. The study room is in the bottom graph.
No, meeting rooms are not. Okay.
I'm sorry.
I think my husband is responsible for the drop in the Meadows because when he was in school, he was at a Meadows study room almost three, four times a week.
Gradually. I'm noticing it went down. I'm pretty sure it's him.
I, I don't think we're going to probably report it in the, in the annual report. The other one that we made a big investment in this year, and that program really launched, is the outreach program. And so we were unable to agree on a indicator where we felt confident in the data that was reported. The one data point that we did report, one of the data points that we did report to the state showed a four thousand percent increase, which is great. But I don't think that's going to, that would be a useful number to you this year because it's like the program really began in the latter part of 2023. And this 2024 was really its first, and some of the staff aren't even on there. So that, that program only really existed for the first time. We are, we do have a committee that's working on a refining of a singular data point that will be reflective of, of hopefully not just all the people that we talked to about a library program, but more the people that we engage with directly in the outreach program, and that would be a number that we would report on. Substantially large, smaller than all the other numbers that you're seeing in here, but reflective of the work that they're doing, which really is a more labor-intensive and face-to-face interaction.
We added two or three staff in that?
We did.
This year. And then it would be helpful potentially for them to come back. When was the last time that they presented to the board? Like, was it?
Kate, Kate presented the strategy, I think, in August of last year.
Okay.
We launched the strategy towards the end of the year and, and now this year they've kind of been running. Well, they did a lot of work last year too, last summer.
So maybe it's, maybe towards the end of the year, might have them, if, if the board, I think it'd be nice to have them back just to give us an update just on what they're doing. I, if this is in that vein, does the board typically agree that that would be a good thing for total schedule in the late part of the year?
They just presented to the foundation a couple months, a month or two ago because they were requesting funds. So the foundation is, does fund some of the stuff.
Outreach program.
Maybe a couple of samples, obviously, right?
Yeah.
Overrises.
Oh, I think it'd be, it would be towards the end of the year.
Hundred and ninety thousand dollars given to it.
Yeah. So.
But yeah, I have a good show. You should bring it back.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll look into it and like, I'll see. So, okay, yeah, I, I just like to, for us, you know, as a board, to better know what they're doing because I know they're doing some good work, so.
So you think this page on the meeting room occupancy may or may not be on the final report?
You know, you tell me. I, I, I don't find it to be a useful data point for the board necessarily. I mean, the, the reality is that report is like a twelve-page report. And Jennifer Barris, who's not here tonight, spent quite a lot of time trying to boil it down to a singular point. This is as, as much, as far as we can go. I want it to be like one data point that you could track and say like, this is how we're doing. And we were not capable of it right now. I think we want to look at it to see if we can get it down to this. If you go to a data point, it's easy for you to say like, you're going to remember, you're not going to remember Meadows was seventy-six and Maine was seventy-four next year. But if there was one number that was like seventy-six percent occupancy last year across the district, then I think that would be a number that you could probably hold on to in a few years. Say like, wow, our meeting room usage is going down, or wow, it's really going up. So I honestly don't know that we can get it much higher than eighty percent.
But the question is to the board, should we ask the meeting room thing for the annual report? Is that what you're asking?
You know, you don't have to. Do you think it adds value for you?
I, to me, it doesn't really add any value. So.
Yeah. I agree.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. I, I think it's hard to, because, you know, the weekends, like I was telling David, they can't get a room.
Right.
You know, if I want to come in on Monday at ten AM, I can get a room. Yeah, so that's when I don't need it. So, but anyway, um, I would say just eighty-six, yeah. Um, and then do you want us to look, does the board want to look at this again in July? Or would you want to, so we do the finalized version or is it okay to finalize?
I'm comfortable finalizing right now and plus, you know, David wants to rewrite the whole thing. I'm sure he can bring it back, assuming it's going to look substantially similar to what it was. Find together.
And my introduction was okay? Okay.
That's nice.
Yeah, try to keep it short.
Do you have any print copies? Do you do?
We're not going to do any print copies.
It's all electronic.
And this is what we will, so, yeah, this is a, you know, we're good to go. We don't need you to die.
Calm, no objections on your end, Jason?
No.
And we will get it out then to city council and to the county commissioners in the next couple of weeks. I want to go next into the survey results. We're going to kind of do it in tandem. Ray is going to drive the bus. I don't have a presentation. So this is, this is the survey we looked at a couple of months ago. It went out for, I think, two weeks.
Yeah.
We, we got, I think there's going to be a number of takeaways in this thing, but the big thing I want you to take away from it is like, okay, so the data is not perfect, right? We polled cardholders. So these are people who have had a library card. It's not everybody. In 2018, we paid for a survey that was independent and neat cardholders. The, the results are remarkably similar and that's kind of what we wanted to test. The numbers are slightly up. That may be because of the cardholders. But I think the, probably the big accomplishment, which was just something we tested this year, was we used gift cards to incentivize young people and people who self-identify as Latina to increase those percentages of participants. We doubled the number of Latinos, people who self-identify as Latino respondents and we, whatever you call it, by going five times the amount of people who are under twenty-four. So for that, a remarkable success. We are still shy people under twenty-four by, you know, double the margin. We did run the survey afterwards by weighting it towards the population. It did not substantially change the results by weighting the younger population at double the amount that responded. But you will see nuances, I think, if you look down into the details. We'll talk a lot about them tonight about, there is a generational difference in terms of how people under the age of thirty-five and people over the age of fifty-five see a lot of substantial differences. Maria, take it away.
Okay, awesome. So we, you know, the last, the best for the last, so, you know. So a quick thing, you know, just talking about what David was saying. So just to give you a little more background, we actually got a little over a thousand people, one thousand one hundred and eighty-three to be exact. Because this time we did have age in our file, and this is a paid service, survey. So we, you know, they all have cards with us. We were able to do this in waves because the, the major objective was to really have enough people in each group that we could do an analysis for them. So, and we can have statistics significances between each one of the groups. The groups were genders. We wanted to see the difference between males and females and others as well as age groups, how different age groups use the library. Also, we wanted to get some Hispanics and also we got, you know, a few, you know, a good sample of Asian as well. So to do this, we, we reached out to them in waves. What David says is true, that we incentivized everybody with a five-dollar Amazon gift card. For those, I would say, that were harder to reach, we actually bumped them up to ten. And, you know, and then the ones that were, you know, for example, we know that females, older females, they are very responsive. So we were very target how many we were sending at a time because we didn't want to reject anybody. For the ones that they are eighteen to twenty-four, we send them to everybody. And then after a couple of times, we would sell. And then after a couple of times, we would say, okay, five dollars didn't work that good. So we did ten, and then we got, uh, you know, we got away a hundred people, you know? We could have gotten more, but I, we thought that that was actually very good. Um, so this is the summary, you know, long time, have fun reading it. Uh, this is our respondent profile, as you have seen. So we got enough males and we got enough females and others to be able to read them separately. The same thing with the groups. This is what, you know, Debbie was talking about. You know, the eighteen to the twenty-four, we have ninety percent, but that was, you know, a little bit over a hundred people. Still, you know, very good, uh, rating, uh, on those numbers. And then the other ones are, you know, around the twenty percent. So we did run the data, assuming that everybody had twenty percent. And like Debbie said, they were sort of didn't change. Um, then here you have, you know, with mostly, you know, almost eighty percent, they are white. Populations have ten percent Asian, and then six percent Hispanic. Um, for kind of a minor, we got A two, eighteen, that is a good representation of what older is. Then we got also, you know, uh, the, uh, the income, and then what was the main liability as well.
So we did cross-tap it like this with the census data, right? So the numbers are remarkably close. Obviously, uh, the Hispanic population is still underrepresented here. If we would go further districts, I think it would be somewhere likely around ten percent of the population. Asian population is really closer to five, the older, so it's slightly overrepresented here, but I think that's a good sign. The one place, and and parents of children, that is exactly the number here in older. Uh, age, obviously, uh, is one there. There's some discrepancy here, right? Like, so the average age in Boulder is twenty-eight, twenty-eight. Um, there is a a high number of students between the ages of eighteen and twenty-six. That skewed the population here in Boulder quite heavily. Uh, it is interesting that over sixty-five group is pretty close to twenty-three percent. It is now eighteen percent of Boulder, so as many people who are over sixty-five as have children now. And that's, uh, that is reflected in what the the census shows. The one thing that I, I mean, I I'm not sure what to make of it yet, but, um, the economic income, um, there are sizable number of people who prefer not to answer. But of those who did prefer to answer, obviously, this skews significantly away from the affluents of Boulder. So the people who did choose to answer, um, the one, the the income levels, uh, are are lower than what you would expect to see at Boulder. And so that that's maybe a good sign for us that we are reaching to underserved populations. It could also just mean that, um, the income that's reported for the crowd of over sixty-five is lower than.
Was this Austin's household income or individual income?
Then here I can a few more, um, democracies, education, where they live in the Boulder area. And then if they were in person.
Which mostly tells us, it goes off surveys. So, I mean, it's not very familiar with the data, like, is more than half of it in renters. This survey is heavily skewed towards homeowners and people who've been in their homes for a long time. That number is dramatically different than what the census data shows.
So let's start. So the first thing that we asked them was, uh, you know, what was the primary function of the library? And, you know, it's not surprised that ninety-four percent of them said, you know, we make books and information available to everyone. And also, almost eight percent said that we promote literacy and allow for reading. Um, then for, you know, one, two, and three, you know, said that we provide occasional enrichment or provide a space and opportunity for the community to gather, a safer space, and then half of them said that we provide access to computers and new technologies. I mean, nothing surprising here. Um, when we go and, uh, we are going to see these tables, uh, you know, through the presentation. And when you see the red and the green, that means that it's statistically significant. If this is green, means that the number is ninety-five percent confidence interval. It's that it's significant if it's red, it's the lowest number. Uh, if there is no red or or green, means the numbers are not different. Even though they are, they are not, they are not significantly different. So you can see that here, you know, the females actually rate us, uh, much higher than males across pretty much every single parameter. And, um, that you see the younger population really rates higher, uh, providing a space for them to gather, and we will see this as we go because that's how they use the library. And, uh, and then, uh, you know, at the top, a little bit, you know, I think that white, you know, says more like we provide the books and formation more like Hispanic edition. And that could be also because maybe we don't have as many books in Spanish. We don't have, you know, books in, you know, in other languages, so.
Yeah, so if you, if you look at this again, it's, we'll repeat this throughout the survey. If you look towards the bottom, provide a public space for everyone to use, and then look at the age demographics. It is the last category, or it is the last ranking that people over the age of fifty-five give a library. Uh, it's a near second, uh, for those people under the age of thirty-five. And that's a, that's a, you know, that's a thirty-point swing, thirty, yeah, thirty-point swing in terms of the difference in the library. And I think this speaks to use, this bears out in national surveys. If you look at national surveys, uh, young people and lower-income people tend to rate the public space at a much higher value than, uh, home current, uh, or household.
I wonder on this last question about, I mean, it's too late now, but in the future, access to computers. Given the, given the like, you know, dropping in computer usage, like, is there another question we could ask instead of that, you know, in the future? Just to think about that because, or, you know, maybe this is standard, but I know this is what you asked in twenty eighteen, but.
Yeah, and the numbers have dropped, and the numbers have dropped.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and that that number.
So maybe there's something we could test, you know, you know?
We don't ask that access to internet separate question.
Yeah.
We do ask them how they, if they exist. And that is like a question that's worth.
That would be interesting to know how many players are trying to have the internet access.
The younger, the younger audience, they come to study and use the wireless, yeah.
Because right now, they're only grouped under the access to computers, new technologies.
Yeah, I think.
Even though the internet is neither a computer nor a new technology.
Yeah.
And I'm so sorry, you mentioned this and I just missed it. What's the power and non-power user?
Yeah.
So those are, we, uh, when we asked the question, you know, how frequently they come to the library? And, uh, so if they came, you know, uh, a few times a month or more, we are, it's a power user, the same thing with the online resources. They use them more than, you know, a few times a month or more, they are power users. If they are like, you know, um, once a year or something, they are non-power. So we wanted to see also the differences between, you know, using them.
Sylvia's a power user.
Then we asked them actually to write, you know, a few statements, and, you know, it's, uh, most of them said that having a library in the neighborhood is was really important, and also the the library played a really important role on their lives. Um, you know, so everything was rated very highly, uh, as you can see. Uh, also, we were a trusted place for information.
These, uh, these scores, I, we asked them every time, it's like, well, I've never seen such high numbers. These are higher than what we had in twenty eighteen. It's probably twenty to thirty percent higher than what you see in national surveys. I mean, the the one where the, I honestly cannot believe the library is a place for trusted information actually went up from where it was in twenty eighteen. Uh, it's kind of a remarkable number. I I think that speaks, I'm not sure that speaks much about the level we are, but it says a lot about the community and how they feel about public life. Uh, and those numbers are all fairly remarkable.
Yeah, and I think the last one, just because somebody didn't read, you know, very highly, maybe because they don't know that we do this, you know? They don't know the average programs and, uh, and, you know, all the programs that we have for the Hispanic speaking population, so.
You know, as another side, we also don't know to what extent. Because some of these terms, you know, it's not, it's not within our control, what is politicized and what is not, right? So when you ask the question, library to use for everyone. I mean, it is easy to see in today's climate how that 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 language itself can be politicized. The same way to regard to providing credit that are not English language. So, and anyway, I don't know if there could be, in relation to some of those scores, perceptions of the community change.
So now we are going to go into how they engage with the library. We asked them how many times, uh, they visit the library in person. And you can see sixty-two percent, they visit at least a few times a month. And, uh, and then, you know, the rest, you know, a few times a year, or they don't come at all. If you look, uh, on the table, you can see, you know, the people that visit a few times a, times a month are the younger people, and this is the people that come into the library to study. You know, they have their computer, they, you know, they use the library in in that capacity. The thirty-five to the fifty-four, this is, I would find this, they are the families with the minors. So they come here once a week, maybe for the, you know, story time, the kids program. And then the sixty-five class, that it's also, uh, at least once a week. These are the people that are coming to pick up the hoods, to get a new group. This is your older population. And then in between those, you have the few times a year, you know, they are not student. They just come here, you know, maybe a pickup, you know, go to an event, you know, once in a while. You're twenty-five to thirty-four, or the fifty-five to sixty-four. So they are more, they don't use the library as much.
This is my, this is a question I'd like to leave, so this is why the hardest ones to read, right? Because, again, the numbers here are twenty percent higher than what you would see nationally. Uh, and so, eh, eh, whatever that does for you, for me, it introduces a lot of skepticism about the validity of people's health. It introduces a lot of skepticism about the kind of people who take surveys. I don't know what to make of the data, but I can tell you that these numbers are extraordinarily high compared to a national average. And I think higher than, higher than what we got again in twenty eighteen. Uh, so, great, but also just, uh, a word of caution.
But we're, we're surveying cardholders. So in the twenty eighteen survey, did we survey only cardholders?
Yeah.
So that was all communities, so I might.
And then, and during the campaign, the the foundation surveyed just likely voters. And so the numbers, again, uh, bear striking resemblance to these, and it says, I mean, for me, it's like, it says a lot more about Boulder than it says about necessarily something that we're, I don't know.
Okay. So close to fifty percent have a college degree?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't know how that.
That's relative to the national, I think.
Is it? Okay.
Then we asked them, you know, why, um, they visit the library. As you can see, you know, um, sixty or sixty percent to, you know, pick up a book or look for a book to read. And then it really drops to one, uh, every three, to go to an event or worker study. And then it drops again to use the meeting rooms, computers, or, you know, use the making space and the, uh, wireless and internet, seventy percent, so.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Thank you. And then this is here where you can see how every single group, uh, use the library. You can see the younger, uh, population, you know, they have to work with study. It's, uh, uh, it's much higher than any other groups. And then you can see the pickup, a book, a hold, you know, uh, goes from sixty percent to sixty percent, uh, on the sixty-five class. And go to a program event. Again, you know, these are your families, uh, with the kids. Uh, just the making space, it goes into, you know, between the twenty-five and the sixty-four. Those are the audiences that use it the most, the younger and the older, uh, patrons. They don't tend to use it as much. And then I think here on the side, it's interesting that, you know, you can see the, it's one of the locations. The, uh, the branches, people go to pick up the hoods, but they don't go to stay there, right? They don't go to, um, they don't tend to go to, uh, to study, um, or, uh, anything. It's, that's more, uh, happens in Maine. So you have twenty-seven percent versus the, you know, teens, the fourteen, sixteen percent.
And then adding to your point, uh, on the use of wireless access, then this bears out nationally to, uh, people who identify as Hispanic, right, to double or quadruple.
Yeah, the the younger population that comes here to study and the Hispanic, the most that uses it the most. Then we asked them, you know, what type of reading, uh, do they, do they do? And, you know, almost ninety percent said that they do physical books, but then, you know, the, uh, audio books and the ebooks are actually increasing very rapidly. So we are almost, you know, half there, so fifty percent almost. And then this is, you know, how each one of the populations use it, you know? Because the females, um, use more the audio books than than males. And also the twenty-five to the thirty-four are the biggest, uh, users, users of the digital resources. And we think that is because we don't have those materials, so that makes sense. Okay, so then we asked them, um, how often they use the digital resources. And that means the Libby, Hoopla, Canopy website. And you can see that fifty-five percent, over half, use it at least a few times a month. Um, but also twenty, twenty-one percent, they never use it. So that's very high. Um, females are more likely to use any of them than males. And also, the, you know, the, that twenty-five to the sixty-four percent as well, as white.
I wonder how much of this is our, you know, well, I don't know. Like, it's kind of hard to access, like, the digital papers and stuff on the website. I mean, you have to hit multiple clicks and stuff.
Yeah, well, this is not for that. This is for the website, Libby, Hoopla, and Canopy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is just the digital resources, not the online, yeah. We will go to that.
We do, we do a question after, yeah, you're wrong.
Uh, so of of those, Libby is the one that is the most popular and people use it. Uh, the most followed by Hoopla and then the website. And then we asked them, how do you usually find, uh, information about the programs and services? And you can see the top two is the library website and the email newsletters. So, you know, they are, we find them very powerful. Um, the social media is pretty, you know, only ten percent. And all our printed materials, it's only fifteen percent.
Yeah, so this is an interesting one, and I, I think across us, I, I kicked myself when I saw it. I felt like, I wish we wouldn't start that webpage we do six years ago, or last year at least. Um, because it is interesting to think that, like, we know that eighty percent of the traffic comes to the webpage and leaves right away for two things. One is the catalog, and the other is the calendar, right? So, and the majority of those are going to the catalog, which is not a website that we run. We, we're just a member, but we don't run. Calendar is one that we don't entirely run either. We feed data into a software. And neither one of those are, uh, as effective of of tools as they could be. And so it's a little bit disturbing to think that, like, nearly seventy percent of people get all their information, early information to the web, when I don't think we're doing a very good job. Social media is also an interesting one because, you know, while we've never had a concentrated effort, we do put, extend quite a bit of effort, distributed effort into, uh, the social media presence. And we've known for quite some time that it was largely ineffective. Uh, this kind of just shows the case that, yes, it is. Of note, too, which, you know, call on the other slides, is, again, among people who identify as Hispanic, uh, the social media score is, I think, over twice that high. So they are getting information. We do have a Spanish-language, uh, social media presence, but it's not one that's very active. We haven't done much with it. But it's maybe an opportunity for growth in the future. Local news, printed brochures, word of mouth, I think. We hear all that all the time. People want to take out an ad in the paper. It's like, which paper and what, what kind of ad are you going to take? And the word of mouth, we we frequently hear people say like, well, everybody finds out about the word of mouth. Well, actually, three times more people are finding out about the web and probably not talking to us. And that's not, I don't know that they're having any experience, uh, on the web. I know I.
The email is as effective, I, I mean, we have a really good email, I think. And we saw that with the trustee recruitment, I think, and so. And I found it to be great. It's actually put together well. There's not too much there. It's enough stuff. It's like. It's actually put together well, there's not too much there, it's enough stuff, it's like, yeah.
That's one of the things we've sunk a lot of time and energy into this past year, and I think we are refining and doing a lot more targeted emails for age groups, for demographic groups, we're doing a lot of different targeted marketing in that field, and I think it's starting to show some dividends. It's good to know that that is where, you know, a majority of people do find out information about libraries. I wouldn't say that that is one that we've, I'm sure there's ways we can continue to improve it, but we've spent, especially in twenty twenty-five, we rolled out targeted, it's eight, eight different.
Nine, yeah, nine different. For example, last week, there was an event here in the Canyon Theater, and they emailed me, it's like, we only have five people registered. And in one day, we went from five to a hundred and thirty-seven people, and we filled, almost filled the theater. So it's powerful, they're working very well, so. So, you know, this is what Libby was saying, you know, what do they do when they go to the website? So mostly they go to look for their book to read, or, you know, look for an event, you know, go to the event calendar, or, you know, look for books for information, but that's pretty much what they do.
The newspaper one was there, thirty-four percent, that number has not changed in twenty years. And it skews heavily towards people who are in school or in college. And use some of those resources outside of those groups is very, and so again, another thing that we invest quite a lot of money.
Yeah, don't give them big data.
But it's not an easy resource to use.
Yeah. I forgot my question, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
So now we want to look at, you know, what is preventing for them, you know, engaging with the library? So we ask them, you know, this is only, the sample is small, it's only seventy-six people. So just take this with, you know, a grain of salt, but when we ask them why you are not coming to the library, forty-seven percent of those that responded said that they prefer online resources. They just don't, you know, like, Libby was saying, they just want to go to Hoopla or Libby, or, you know, just download their books. They don't even need to come here. And then forty-one percent, you know, they are the ones that, they just don't feel comfortable coming. You know, they bring their unhoused, how they feel unsafe, you know, like, they don't, you know, they don't want to be here. And they tend to be, you know, older, but, you know, still, they have their concerns. So this is a few examples. I have more, so if you guys want to see everything that they said, I can send it.
The right-hand column looks like my inbox. We can, you can, we can report the data all we want, you cannot tell people to feel safe.
Yeah.
There's nothing you can do to say, you should feel safe. We have to, but we have to be able to, that's pre-existing. My time in Boulder, sort of when I got here, I remember sitting in a park and overhearing a popular story of a person who pulled a gun on somebody at a library event, because I was coming to work, you know, to find that report. There was no such thing, it was a story that was told, but that led us, it's based off of some element of the stories that are told that the community experiences that people have had in the library, and that become bigger, and it's something that we cannot ignore, right? It is a, it is a serious concern, predominantly it's older residents, but not exclusively older residents who have that perception. Especially the downtown.
And this is the, you know, the online research tool is what you were talking about. So now we ask them what are the main barriers for them to use the digital resources of our website, Canopy, Hoopla, and also all the online research tools such as the brainfuse, the newspapers, all those. And you can see that, you know, on the digital resources, thirty-six percent didn't know. But sixty-three percent don't know about the other ones. So it's a big, you know, the barrier is because they don't even know that they exist. So we have to, you know, do a better job promoting them, and also, you know, figure out which ones are, they are, you know, people are interested in which ones they are not. You know, some people said they don't need them, or they don't know how to access them, so. But it's a big difference between one of the others, almost that one. Another barrier that we can, you know, think is, you know, how familiar are people with the different programs and things that we do, right? So, you know, most, you know, almost everybody knows about that we have books, ebooks, audio books, movies, that also we offer free Wi-Fi, that we have meeting rooms, that we have computers and scanners, and then it just goes down. Only thirty-eight percent know about the maker space. Well, I thought it was a little bit low, but maybe it's because they don't know what building sixty-one and studio twenty-four is. Of course, you know, the online databases, only thirty-three percent, and just go all the way down to fourteen percent on home delivery programs.
Were there any significant outliers in the cross tabs for this question?
Meaning?
Like, were there specific demographics that looked a lot different?
No, I can double check, but if I didn't bring that up, most likely not.
You know, I, so, I mean, this was interesting, this has to discuss, right? And so the maker space and creative workshops, thirty-eight percent. Like, basically what we're testing here is name recognition, right? And in some ways, it's probably good that it's not forty percent, because all the programs are full, and you can't get into a class in the maker space, any of them. I mean, good luck, we are at capacity. But I think where we failed, and this is something we have to figure out in terms of a marketing perspective, is we've also failed to communicate that, like, the library is not simply about books. Because the whole STEM enterprise and the idea of all forms of literacy is a message that we can communicate more, not with an attempt to drive use, but to mend hearts and minds, and so that people understand that that is a valid purpose of the library. We've been doing a maker space now for eight years. I mean, we have not had a time where it's not just, like, absolutely packed and overrun. It's a dedicated group of followers. Well, I don't think we would want to see the reverse, where we start to think of books or something else like that, like, it's just a dedicated group of followers. But maybe that does happen, and then how do we contend with it? We still need to be able to communicate the message so that people support the idea that we're doing STEM programming, whether they have use for it or not. In the previous table, I mean, those numbers, you know, those are not, I don't know that those are indicative of, like, hey, if we just advertised, we could do better. I think in some ways, library use is episodic, and you find the things that you need at the time that you need them. And so it may be describing more the cap in terms of what the community's use of that service is, rather than defining a mechanism by which we could further say, like, you really need to have access to all these language learning resources. Maybe twenty-six percent is the number of people that need those services, and they are fully aware of them. So I don't know, the survey doesn't really tell us that, and I don't know that it shows, like, hey, there's potential work for growth. I do think, you know, I do think with regard to name recognition, if that's what we're testing, but it's not entirely that. We call out building sixty-one, studio twenty-four, so it part is name recognition. We don't call out Boulder Reads, which may have made the language learning resources have a higher score because of the name recognition. So that's something that we all have to refine a little bit better, I think, the next time we do the survey, but it's also, I'm not sure exactly what to do with this yet.
What? The economy is really high. You know, that seems high for me, to be, you know, twenty-five percent.
I don't know.
As they're aware of it.
And then, you know, but overall, people are very satisfied with the library, right? We have a ninety-three percent, and they are very satisfied or satisfied, so. Was great. And the ones that they are not, it's just the same concern, you know, because when we ask them, people are giving us very high, why? And, you know, this is why. So they, again, they are housed, they are safe, lack of safety. It's just why they are not comfortable coming to the library or being here at the library. And then the last question that we asked is what type of programs that we'd like to see in the future? And cultural events is what is popping up. And we think this is not just the small workshops, I think they are looking for things like one book, one folder, you know, like bigger events, big names, you know? That's what they are looking for. Also educational workshops, and then it drops down with the health and wellness, children, some family. When it makes sense, it's only twenty-four percent, because only eighteen percent of the population have kids that age. And, you know, and then teen focus events.
This is another one that splits the longer age lines. Have you, you see the next slide, it's.
Yeah.
And cultural programming, it really has a preference, and they are fifty-five percent, and they are thirty-five percent. Has a strong, you know, strong, it's about education group, we don't know what they mean by that, but I, you know, the list of examples, the list of examples, technology, personal finance, and DUI. It's not the first time we've heard personal finance, but I think that's going to be one of those things we have to tease out more. To understand, and really, what people want. I think the same cultural product, we have to find out more, what is they, do they want, you know, do they want Beyonce or a guy to banjo? It's two different things, right? Like, you just want, if we just have a guy to banjo every week, are we going to be satisfied?
Could we, could we have gotten Beyonce this whole time? Just not been doing that for some reason?
Yeah. But I don't, I don't know exactly what they need there, I guess.
Um, I know one of the things that during the campaign on, under the personal finance thing was people's understanding of, like, you know, tax exemptions, and we discussed this, like, property tax exemptions for seniors, and how to apply, you know, those are the kind of things that people didn't really know much about. You know, I see a lot of people, like, investing, like, how do I invest my 401K, you know, like, those types of workshops, I think would be helpful for people. You know, college funding and stuff. We had some workshops last summer on essay writing, I thought we're good, I think, you know, college funding being something that's coming up all year soon, so, yeah.
So when we launched the survey, I believe I said here, and I know I said to the staff, I'm quite sure I said to you, I think the most important question that we have here on the entire survey was, are you willing to participate in an ongoing pulse surveys going forward? And so we had over four hundred respondents who said that they were interested in doing that. The staff are currently working on questions. We will start to do regular pulse surveys of maybe two or three questions that are going to go out to those respondents, starting in June. Probably do it every month or every three weeks for the foreseeable future, to get more refinement on. Some of the questions that we've asked here, if you guys think of some questions that you're interested in, that you'd like to know more about from the community, I think fair game, like, send them to me, and we'll work them through with your readers. We will start asking questions in June, I don't know exactly what those questions are, I think they're going to be around, refined precisely this question. Some of the more additional things that you might like to see, and I think they're going to try to drill down on those, to try to find out more from that group of four hundred that wants to do it. And it is our intention to grow that group of four hundred to a thousand people, or whatever, I don't know. Maria thinks she can do more, I don't know how many people will get that are going to participate in regular pulse surveys, which is like two or three questions, like, you know. But I'm, but I'm looking forward to those, the regular engagement with those four hundred people, and saying, yeah, I'm more than happy to do it.
Yeah. I'm just surprised by the negatives, like, just that whole sense that the library is unsafe, and, like, I'm just really surprised that today it's, like, I could have read this three years ago or something and not been surprised by it, but I'm surprised by today. That it feels that way for some people still, or they just have a memory of that time.
I'm not.
Yeah, good.
I'm not, and like, as we were talking, there were people behind the window. People go in the parking lot, maybe bring young kids, and they're, it doesn't surprise me, it doesn't surprise at all.
Yeah, there's not a day goes by where we don't have somebody with some, probably mental illness or addiction, which maybe is also a mental illness in the library. You know, and not a week goes by where there's not two or three districts at the main, that's not true to the branches. But then it's a, you know, to the degree to which you're affected of, in some cases, it's people who are different than you, right? Like, the library is a place where you are constantly going to see people who are different than you. And you talked about it in regard to the cafe, say what you said about the cafe, I sometimes, it is insightful, right? In some ways, it's.
What did I say? Can you remind me?
There are seven days where you go in the whole place, and you have kids and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, the, yeah, the cafe, yeah, so it just depends on the time you go in there, and it could be filled with unhoused people. Or within an hour, it could completely switch and be filled with families and babies, I find this gross, crawling on the floor, you know, like, and so, like, you know, it's just a, this could be within, like, an hour of each other.
Yeah.
And then it could be, like, lunchtime, it's like a bunch of business people, and, you know, they're just grabbing a coffee. So it, it's really, I think, this is a place, I just wrote a piece for Mary McCullough about this, it's a place where everyone, you have to meet with everyone in the community. And I think there's some people that aren't comfortable with that, and, but there are, I totally disregard all the, like, real stuff that does happen here. And there are incidents where you, I've seen people shouting at each other, you know, like, so it's, it is, but it is a place where everybody meets.
The reputational piece is a part of it, it's not just people's personal, it's partially people's personal experience, like, you come in, I have friends who came into the library, won that experience, and are like, I will go back. But it's also just, like, people, I mean, people were doing stories about meth in the library.
Right.
So it's like, that is very hard to get, like, it's reputationally very hard to get past that. So I think some people, just something like that sticks in their head because it's, you know.
They know.
Hot news. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah.
So.
So it doesn't surprise me, but it's also, I mean, I'm also looking at this, and we're, the negative feedback is coming from, like, subsets of subsets.
Right.
So this is not, like, everyone, I mean, this is, like, of the non-visitors, that, like, this is that, and the non-visitors were a small subset. And then it's like, people who rated other things low, this is why they rated it low. So this is not, like, everyone is saying all these things, it's like.
Well, my other litmus test is my twelve, now thirteen-year-old daughter. When I first started doing this work, she's like, I don't want to walk around the library, and now she's like, goes all around. She's like, well, there's a guard on every corner, you know?
Okay.
So, yeah, we have, that's the other comments we get, this is a police state of repression, you know? And then it's not, so it's, you know, that, those are all the comments we get. I, I mean, I think we're doing a very good job with, I mean, with safety, nice and humble, but we can't change people.
If I can just jump in for a second on this one. I'd like to actually put this on the agenda for the retreat. Again, for, again, I, you know, I have issues with this survey, we talked about when it first got presented to us. We've got something with a result, where forty percent of the respondents, despite a positive overall view of the library, get very detailed on the issue of homelessness in the library, and the fears and the safety, et cetera. And I think we're, we make a mistake, because a lot of this conversation is, we're making excuses to ourselves in this conversation, but. And I'm with you, you get to experience all kinds of people here, et cetera, but we should think about how we want to present that out. And some of the other things is, if I remember, we're spending almost a million bucks a year now on security, eight hundred some thousand dollars. That may be a number we need to communicate to the community, to reinforce the idea that we're a safe place to come. I'm also interested in it that we had eighteen percent of the people in the survey had children that were minors. And again, that that population is dropping in Boulder, but that's about half the national average. I'd be curious, Maria, if we can go back and look inside that data as to that group of eighteen percent. How are they respond, how much, what percentage of them were the ones responding about this? The concern of a place being unsafe. So I think it's a bigger discussion, I think it merits us taking the time to really think about it and be creative, and to me, that might be a topic for the retreat.
I think I'll.
I agree with that, and I think it's something we should talk about in the world. Because I, I, I don't want to dismiss it, like you said, like, because I do think, I think it's going to be a struggle, and if we can turn it around, we're going to be like, you know, the best in the. And if we can turn it around, we're gonna be like, you know, the best in the, in the.
Yeah, I, I mean, again, like David and I have talked about, it's like the number one hardest job about the library or any public space in America today is dealing with this issue. And I think we've done, and David and his team in particular have done an exceptional job around it. But we can't pretend it isn't still something that we have to show the community we're paying attention to.
It's also like interesting in that data, I was surprised how many of the students like have children, like how little, but also how many probably account for the foot traffic that come. And so if you're looking at like that insight there, if the majority of folks who are, were counting on foot traffic aren't coming in because they don't feel safe, I don't know, like digging into that, like, is that in something to dig further into? Because those are the people you care about in order to bump up your programming and circulation. And so these other folks, they're never gonna come in, no matter what. Means for the older population will never be, uh, they're never gonna come back, they're always gonna reprint, it doesn't matter. Uh, they'll never boost your numbers, I don't know, like a girl talking, but it just is.
No, that's a very, that's good talk, I, oh, I mean, so eighteen percent is the percentage of households in Boulder that have children, right? So, uh, under the age of eighteen, that is, that is the number. Like, so it is low, uh, Boulder is a, is a, the average age is twenty-eight point eight, it's because there is thirty-three percent of the population is between the ages of not living at home. Eighteen and twenty-six, right? That is a major portion of, and so that average age is being twenty-eight point eight. There is only eighteen percent of the households that have kids in it. There are as many people living in Boulder now that are age sixty-five and home, as have households with people in them over sixty-five, as households that have children. So that's an interesting data point, and to your point, like, by our estimates, families with children make up about a third of the foot traffic. They make up now fifty percent of all the physical circulation, and they make up about sixty, little over sixty percent of all program attendance. So it is a major surface point for us, uh, they were the first group really to come back after the pandemic, was families with small kids. Uh, but yeah, I mean, in my experience, I, I believe anecdotally, I'm seeing an increased number of, of elderly users this year, but it's first time. And they were, it was evident that they were not here for four years of the pandemic. People over the age of sixty, uh, which used to make probably about a quarter of our, um, people using libraries. There was the second, second largest demographic by far, far more than the unhoused, far more than any other group, it was the older crowd. And they vanished, and I'm starting to see them back in small groups. There's a chess club, there's meeting, there's a number of different groups that, but it, I don't know what we've done to bring them back. I, I would love to say that, yes, they are seeing a difference in park and they feel safer, but I can't say that, I have no idea. I, I honestly don't know, I, I have been, been delighted to see older people walking through the door almost every single time I'm downstairs, and that's not something that we saw throughout the period. Children and families, I don't know if they ever really laughed, they, and I don't know that they had a lot of other choices for free entertainment, story time, all that kind of stuff. How many books? They drive, uh, almost all our metrics. Uh, physical circulation now is about fifty, is maybe over fifty percent. And, uh, program attendance is, is probably over sixty percent. It's true.
And I just wanna mention that, uh, that eighteen percent is mostly into thirty-five to fifty-four group. So that's where they are.
I think, yeah, I think you'll probably actually see the people that are scared are older, but, I, but it, it was, I, I don't know how we can slice and dice that information more to see where the groups that are concerned are, if, if, if that's possible. And that might be.
I mean, we have, we have like demographic, age demographic.
Yeah, so it might be, might be interesting to look at that later, and then maybe we can.
Well, is there a, I don't know how we would even find this out, but is there a decrease in going out in public for people over sixty-five in general since the pandemic?
Yes.
Like, I, I don't, I'm, I don't know how to study that, though, or how to find that, but I'm like, how many people just go out less since the pandemic compared.
Well, if you go to downtown Boulder, and they've got downtown Boulder Business District has fun to date on that, I think they, it is, it, I think older people are.
It's a good, that's probably consistent.
And actually, there's a lot of reports on that as well.
Um, but.
I think all people in general going out less.
Yeah.
I, I, I think, I, Maria, I think we do need to tap the, I mean, I, I would like to also see if we can tap the data of, uh, eighteen percent to indicate if they have to.
Yeah, the only thing is that when we, we're asking them, why do you don't come to the library? This is only seventy-six people.
Mm-hmm. Right, I was gonna say, it's, that's what I was saying, it's, it's like a, it's forty-seven percent of like, single digits.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I started. Yeah.
Well, some of these, uh, comments, I've seen, um, post, posted in like Nextdoor groups.
Yeah.
So I know, like, almost verbatim, so I'm like, you know, is it the same person that took the survey that I saw at Nextdoor, like a Dewey Decimal person?
Yeah. Well, I think we got five, you know, we said, he's actually one of them.
I have a extended conversation with him on why we didn't have more books.
Presumably we got some pre-form responses that were not purely to negative questions, right? Like, we have pre-form responses.
Well, this is a, we limited the open-ended questions, there were not, no.
You have open-ended questions are mostly if you have a mission.
Yeah.
I think there's three open-ended questions.
Yeah.
So was one, this one, and the next one was the satisfaction one? So there, were there only two places where you could leave and come?
I, I think, yeah. And I, I think one thing we get today is like, have you witnessed any, uh, any events? You know, that way we can, we can lock down like, what is an actual witness of event? And if they answer that honestly versus, you know, but anyway, I, I don't wanna, let's keep moving on.
No, that's it, I, 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 I appreciate the feedback, and I, I do think we'll parse some of the numbers further. I, I think it would be interesting to just parse out the entire data for the people who indicate, because it is such a big part of our metrics that is actually maybe better, uh, just less people with the kids and their children, um, and I don't know if we can do that.
The eighteen percent?
Yeah. We may be able to go back and look at some data, so we can see what their results of the survey look like from that group. Because that's not a group to be pulled out as a singular group to analyze, but probably we should have. I think it's worth doing in the future to find out, that is.
It's not in the bank, yeah, it's not in the cross tabs, we could, I, I can, I can run it.
Well, let's, let's talk about it, I think we'd have to go back manually, pull out the surveys and then.
I can run it.
Okay, is this the end of the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
It is, and I wanted to just mention Gunbaro. So Gunbaro, we are back on target for the date, uh, for, for presently, um. There are a couple of budget hiccups, those budget hiccups, uh, there, we, we, we will bear the initial costs for some things, but they're clearly, in my mind, clearly, uh, responsibilities of landlord, and we are, we have been negotiating with landlord for about, about a couple of issues around, um, no surprise, the fifty-year-old building plumbing. That's water, water pressure and, uh, fire suppression and also the sewage drainage, uh, which are gonna have to be repaired. Probably to be repaired, that, and that, that's not, not currently contained within the budget, we can certainly cover the cost, but I am asking for the landlord to reimburse us for it. And then we'll have to make a decision if they choose not to, they'll have to, decision, but pass, we're not pursuing.
What's the time of date right now?
What's that?
What's the time of ready date right now?
Uh, you know, we're back on schedule, so summer, um, we, uh, we anticipate that most of the work will be completed in August, the, the construction, we'll have occupancy of the building. Then we need about a month, you know, three weeks in the building, once we have occupancy to stock furniture, books, uh, do the arrangements, trains for staff, and all of the public. As soon as we're ready, but I think that'll probably be sometime in September, we'll have a grand opening, we haven't signed up a grand opening party, because a lot is gonna be determined in the next two weeks, and then we'll know from the contractor, what, if any other things might happen, I don't think there's anything we have to figure out, we figured out some things that we would rather not have figured out with the plumbing, but there you go, uh, so we do know them now, we've been working on it for about a month or two.
And the Noble Playground?
The Noble Playground, I believe, will be completed this week. Uh, the foundation's having a big party in July for donors to do a celebration, but I, I mean, I, I know staff have been down the slide. I know.
When can we go down the slide?
Maybe in a while, I'll take you up there, I, probably if you go up there tomorrow, Selena would like to do it. We, I went up on Sunday before they were open, and my wife went up and, uh, I was like, be careful, the slide's got sand on it, like.
So kids playing on the playground by the end of the week, or by next week, or?
Or by next week, yeah.
Okay.
Presumably they'll just open it as soon as we have to sign off to do so.
Oh, yeah, we're, what I mean, when, when they're done, they'll take down the construction tape, and then it's just like anybody's game, and we'll say, yeah, sure, it's open. I mean, we're not having a party until July, but I, I mean, that's scheduled to be done.
This, this is the question I get the most often. With the Noble effort, not the slide, that's me.
I went up there today, the concrete work is all done, I mean, the patio's poured, it looks fabulous. You know, that whole flow from the playground to the patio into the makerspace is almost ready.
Did you write your whole check to, for the library, the foundation, okay? We got all, we got all the money.
They're good. They paid it, basically, great.
You, yeah, you, you got all the money with interest, we gave you about fifty grand in interest.
Oh, nice, so, okay. Um, okay, so, uh, director updates or something? Um, Chris, any, any updates?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I know I'm kind of famously rose, rose-colored glasses, but all this, you know, bummer talk, I mean, let me just tell you, I was over at the bank, and the banker tells me, oh, my last customer just in here was raving about this killer library we have. And he was talking about all the historical fiction he's been reading from his library in Loveland. Just today, I interviewed for our newsletter, a couple that opened up an endowment in their will, and, uh, it's, you know, to, to fund books in perpetuity here at the library once they die, and they're authors, and they said, this is our, this is our way of thanking the librarians at Boulder Public Library who've been terrific through our whole career. Every time we go in there, we're researching some obscure thing about the history of the fifties when Hollywood came to Utah. You know, we, we weren't there then, and, and the librarians are, are just fantastic. So there is, everywhere you look, there's, there's people with special stories about the library, so pay attention to the ninety-three percent numbers as much as you pay attention to, yes, the national issues that you're, you're digging into. Um, couple of things about, just wanna thank Sylvia for her time as the representative, along with Andy, who thank you, is staying on. And welcome to Kara, uh, who's, who's coming on and replacing Sylvia, uh, on the foundation board. So, is, is that an official piece of business?
Yeah, we haven't done that, yeah.
We haven't done it yet, we haven't done it, we're gonna do it.
Yeah, we're waiting for it.
We're gonna do it, yeah. Right, right, so, cruising through this, I know. Uh, our, our board is looking forward to having dinner with you all, uh, just ahead of next month's board, no, July's board meeting.
Yeah.
Which happens to be on Give Something Away Day. Um, and, uh, Kenny and I, our board president and I, will be in San Diego in a couple of weeks, giving a talk. Um, that we've been asked to give to the international fundraising, uh, international public library fundraising conference that I go to every year, and we're talking about, um, starting the second life cycle of a library foundation. Um, and, and then, you know, so it's, it's really neat to kind of look at the past fifty years, you know, at the active time, at the dormant time, and now at the active time, um, at the politics, you know, and the, and library taxes that got passed. And then everything that's gone on behind the scenes, as you all have been ramping up on your side, what we've been doing to ramp up on our side, and how that's coming together. Uh, so that'll be fun to, to talk. We have a partnership, as you know, with Boulder Public, uh, with, excuse me, the Boulder Bookstore. David Baron, who wrote The Beast in the Garden, right? He's got a new book coming out called The Martians, and they'll be in the Canyon Theater August twenty-fifth, and we'll be doing that, uh, promotion where we, uh, we pay for half of the books.
Oh, that's awesome.
That's worked real well to fill up the theater. And then finally, the, uh, the gala, um, we've, we've got, uh, thirty of the thirty-three tables spoken for now uh, with sponsors, so we're already coming in, having raised money beyond expenses, uh, to give the library, and, um, that, that would be great on September eighteenth, um, and then individual tickets, uh, will go on sale, uh, later this month. I don't know whether it's towards the end of this week or after the holiday weekend. Uh, but we, we are headed towards, um, you know, meeting and exceeding the, uh, at least the revenue goals, uh, the, uh, or the revenue baseline that we established last year at the fiftieth gala. Any questions about that?
Okay, thank you. All right, so the last order of business, um, is election of officers and designation for the library foundation. So, um, I think we've had three people put themselves up for officers and two people for the foundation. Um, I'll, I've asked to stay on as chair, Sylvia as vice chair, and Kara as treasurer. Um, we don't have secretary, it's a long story I can tell you. We didn't find a use for it, so we got rid of it. Um, and then, and, um.
No, come on.
Yeah, so, that's it, that's the story. Yeah, that's the story. And, um, and then Kara and Andy will, Andy will continue on as the foundation rep. Uh, by our bylaws, we have to have two members as, what is the official title?
Liaison.
Uh, liaisons for the, they're voting members on the library foundation.
Library district representatives.
But they're library district representatives, um, and that's a long, well, that's part of our bylaws and part of, uh, the library foundation's bylaws as well, um. So, yeah, the foundation, obviously, it's like a, a friend of the library kind of thing. Um, so, um, I guess we could just make a motion to approve this slate, unless anybody else has an objection to that or makes any comments about that, or wants to.
If there are any other nominations.
Any other nominations? All right, hearing none.
Um, I just wanna make a plug that, um, we need someone else on the financing committee.
Oh.
At some point, I should add tonight.
Probably not, the committee is, is that the only committee we assigned to that is based on government?
It's not, it's, it's just usually whoever's the treasurer and then somebody else who wants to do it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll ask at the next, uh.
We don't have to, I'm just, just wondering.
Yeah, thank you, and governance committee as well.
Yeah.
Um, hopefully our governance committee might, you know, if we have any governance issues between now and July, I don't think we will, but.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so, I guess can we make a motion, or I'll make a motion to approve this slate as off, as officers as presented?
Certainly.
All right, um, so all approving the chair, or the, you know, me as chair, Sylvia as vice chair, Kara as, as, um, treasurer, and then the two library foundation representatives, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, motion carries. And that is? Um, I already did trustee matters, the meeting, welcome, um, we don't usually go, this is kind of a late meeting, we have a lot, can I?
It's only a player.
But, um, we're only meeting, uh, once a month, uh, and so they go a little bit longer, so.
But this conflict today, it was for good reason, like that was a great report, super great information.
Yeah, thanks, thanks everyone for coming, and, um, the meeting is adjourned.
And we don't meet June.
We don't meet June.
Uh, July and August.